Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, April 3rd, 2024. Council members Flores, Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. Please stand for a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance will follow.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from the Wednesday, March 20th, City Council meeting and bills for payment on April 5th and 12th, 2024. Council members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores.
Tonight, we have invited the Sea Wolves team president, Greg Coleman, to speak on the 2024 kickoff season for our Sea Wolves.
Thank you.
I was gonna wear my tiger stuff and see if it would wake the boy.
Well.
I'll be right back.
Well, we appreciate the support and members of council, we very much appreciate your support as well. We are so honored and thankful to be Erie's home team and beyond joy to bring Erie its first Eastern League championship. If you clap, that's all right. The defense of that title starts this week in Harrisburg and then we open at home at UPMC Park next Tuesday at 6 o'clock. Gates open at 5:00 p.m. Ceremonies will start at about 5:15, which includes some different things, including a few ring presentations. I happen to have an Eastern League championship ring here for display. It is big.
That's a room.
It is not easy to type with and it always feels like it's coming into the room about five minutes after I come into the room. But while we are ecstatic to have these and enjoy us, we also want to be able to share it with the fans as well. So on June 8th, Saturday, June 8th, the first 1,500 fans at UPMC Park will get a replica championship ring similar to this one. So we're ecstatic to be able to do that and share that with our fans, with our crew members at UPMC Park. So I want to start by saying real quick that in minor league baseball, we like F-words. Now, I promise I'm gonna keep this clean, all right? Friends and family. UPMC Park is a place where people can connect. You know, we take great pride in that. Fun, it is literally the reason we exist, to make people happy. Future, future's big for us, not just the future of the city of Erie, but also the future stars that come through UPMC Park. There are lots of other F-words too, whether it's fireworks or it's food, but really the big one for us is fans. That really is the thing for us. The fans are what make us go, the ability to help them celebrate milestones in their life, to be able to make memories, to pass it down from one generation to the next is really what Sea Wolves baseball is about. So we are thankful to the fans, we're thankful for the city of Erie for their support. We are starting our 29th season this year, which may seem very, very hard for, you know, for some of us, but it is our 29th season and we are looking forward to getting that started at UPMC Park. Again, home opener is Tuesday, April 9th, 6:05 p.m. So thank you very much, we appreciate everything. Go Erie, go Sea Wolves.
We do have a certificate for you and I'm gonna read it. It just says that Sea Wolves champions and just the team with us coming to you today. How many people have the only ones? Anyway, I'm gonna give you this back because I know the team's coming in today.
Team is coming in today, yep.
Mr. Coleman stopping in for us was very nice and gracious. Thank you. See you again.
Imagine what a World Series ring would look like when the Eastern League championship won. You should have had that at the fight, I guess, to knock somebody out, wouldn't you?
Well, we're all very thankful for Mr. Coleman coming and presenting us. We're very proud of our Sea Wolves for winning the first gold championship. We're gonna move on to repository sales. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on a repository sale? Anyone here for a repository sale? Do we have anyone here for a repository sale? Okay, we will move on. If we have any citizens who would like to speak, please line up on the right side of the room. And the media, as you can see, no one's here, should line up on the left side of the room. I would like the public to please state your name and the municipality in which you live and you have five minutes. And you can step to the podium when you're ready.
Ruth Swanney from the city of Erie. I'm here to address again the issue of our public library. I thank those members of the council who have signed the petition to keep our library public. I find it interesting that it was 29 years ago that the Sea Wolves arrived in Erie. It was 29 years ago when the Blasko Library opened in Erie. And now, today, our Blasko Library is under attack by our county executive renting out, leasing out part of it to the private nonprofit church sponsored Gannon University. And I asked here two weeks ago for a resolution from City Council supporting the efforts to keep our library public. We're not going away. We hope the library does not go away either. And I ask again for your support for a resolution to keep our library public. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
I'm Johnny R. Campbell and I live at 1057 West Sixth Street. I could ask a lot of questions this morning, but I want to ask some questions. My question is, my next door neighbor, he been harassing me ever since they moved in. That was 2019 in October. First, they ran up on the grass, I had to fix that. And they don't never say, "I'm sorry." They don't ever say, "I'm gonna fix this or fix that," you know? Children playing on the grass and just turning. Now, they planted a tree for me. When I moved there, it was a big tree and the city moved the tree and I asked them, "Could I get another tree like I want?" And they said, "Yes." It was a red maple. So he poisoned his tree, I took some bark off the tree, took it to analyze and he said, "It's called deadly mildew." And every time it rains, he raised the tree. You should see it now. So I called everybody in Erie, I think, almost, that I knew. But police don't come out anymore. Why? That's one thing I want to know. Why they don't come out and help people that having problem with these people? I called them, they'll say, "I can't help you. I'm sorry, I can't help you." I said, "What's your job is in? If you can help me." And you told me you don't want to train the police, you all train the police. So I don't see a very good job doing, you know what I mean? So, but anyway, I called, I called the lady that do the trees. Now, she told me she'd be out one Friday, I stayed on Monday waiting for it, she didn't come. So I called her, I think it was yesterday I called her. I asked her, "Did she come out?" And she said, "Yes." She came out and took a picture. And I said to her, "Did you show it to anybody else besides yourself, your boss?" She said, "No." She said, "Why, what I showed is to them?" I said, "I don't know." I said, "Somebody should know it besides you." I don't even know if she came out or not, you know what I mean? But this, I don't know why they keep harassing me because I thought I was a good person. You know, I'm talking about themselves. But I don't understand it. And let the children play all over the grass. He have told his people, businesses that come to them, he have told them, "Run on her grass, don't run on behind." Isn't that stupid? That's the stupidest thing I ever heard of. So I just wanted to know, why want the police to come out when I call them? I pay taxes to you. Do y'all have an answer for that or not?
I'm sorry, ma'am, we don't engage, we just listen.
You just listen, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, okay. Well, is my time up?
It'll beep in five minutes, Lori, the clerk is taking care of the time, so you can keep going.
I can keep going. So I don't, you know, I call people, I call even the sheriff. One sheriff told me, called the sheriff, because I don't know what their position is when I call, you know what I mean? I don't know what they do, but I called to ask questions and the girl said, "I don't know if Campanella, whatever his name is, I don't know if he does that kind of work." But he said, "So," he said, "I'll just put you this phone." And but when I, when he picked up the phone, the answering machine said, "I'm not here now, but if you leave your name and your telephone number, I'll get back to you." They never called me back, nobody. And I said, "What, what, what are going on downtown?" And you know, I was out there cleaning my yard, I like my yard cleaned, I like everything, I can be honest with you. And the kids just coming on, throw things on the, you know what I mean? And I shouldn't have to live like this, I really shouldn't. And I'm not going to. He want, he want my house, see? He want me to move. My husband died in 2012 and he want me to move. But I said, "I'm not leaving, I'm not going anyplace." I said, "You might be going, but I'm not going anyplace. I'm gonna stay until God take me home," you know what I mean? So I just want you all to look into that and see why people is not doing their jobs they supposed to do. They got a job to do, when I worked at GE, retired from there. When I had a job to do, I did it, you know? Because I know I had a job to do if I wasn't looking for a paycheck. People want to get paid today, but they don't want to work. So I think my time is up and thank you all for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
I live in the fine city of Erie, Pennsylvania. I'd like to start with, forgive me, I'm very nervous, I forgot half my notes, but I'd like to start with Huntington Beach, California has banned all single entity month-long celebrations in favor of unity celebrations. In Erie, Pennsylvania, we have one of the most diverse cultures that I've ever seen. I mean, we got all kinds of nationalities. But so that's what progressive cities do, all right? We don't focus on a single entity, we focus on unity. And now I'd like to say, all the information I'm about to tell you is come straight off Google, I'm not making anything up. You can go to Google and research everything that I did. I'm here to tell you that you were lied to, you were bamboozled, you were just completely misled, all right? It was the last May, petition was approved, they set up a display in the library under the premise, under the premise that they were merely doing what they were doing to help, to save the most vulnerable members of society from committing suicide. That, my friends, is a straight-faced lie. They lied to you, all of you, they lied to. The fact is, the most vulnerable children that commit suicide are aged 10 to 14 after they start socializing on the internet. They've even come to the conclusion that the sooner a child gets on the internet, the more likely that child is to commit suicide. However, that group did not focus on that age group at all. They completely skipped it, they went right, set up their display in the children's section and focused their energy on three to eight-year-old children. And again, again, now if the information they were providing would help them children not to commit suicide, I would not be here, okay? But everything they provided them children was for grooming, it had nothing to do with suicide. And again, like I said, 10 to 14, the internet, ages three to eight, the main reason for suicide is discipline. They get in trouble at school, they get disciplined. School calls to home, they go home, they get disciplined, "You're grounded, go to your room." And in that room, alone by themselves, 58% of children commit suicide, all right? Not a single mention of that on that display, okay? The next 20% is because they live with parents that are active in abuse or in addiction, all right? The last 22% is because of violence and sexual abuse. Has nothing to do with gender, all right? Nothing, nothing at all. But that's what they focused on. You know, I mean, they lied to you, they deceived you, they did not focus on suicide for children. As a matter of fact, let me tell you, the amount of children that commit suicide because of gender issues is so small, there's not a percentage for it. But that's what they focused on. You understand, you've been duped, you've been lied to. And again, all my information, straight off Google. I got this off Google. I want you all to see this.
We're not supposed to display props, right? Yeah.
No?
No, you're not supposed to bring anything in.
I apologize, I did, I know it's my first time here.
It's okay.
But there was a parade last June, they marched down this street chanting, "We're here, we're queer, and we're coming for your children." That's what it says. Go ahead, go on Google, look at it, it's right there. I'm not making this up. Let's break that down, okay? They say we're queer, all right? I have no issue with that. I understand the current theory, the medical and science facts, why people are homosexual. And then again, there are other people that choose it as a lifestyle. I don't have an issue with that. Homosexuality is not the issue, it's grooming children, that's the issue I'm bringing to you, all right? This is wrong, it is so wrong. Says we're queer, all right, I'm okay with that. Says we're here, you want to move to smoke and mirrors, that means they have the finances and the ability to achieve their goal. And what is their goal? They're coming for your children. They're saying it, it's right there. And in Erie, Pennsylvania, they came for our children. If they wanted to help children that commit most suicide, they would be focusing on 10 to 14-year-old children, they'd be bombarding them with commercials about how to deal with, with, well, I guess my time is up, I can hear the bell whistling.
Thank you for speaking, sir.
Can I just add, I think we need to ban all celebrations during Gay Pride Month. I think we need to remove the sanctuary.
Your time is done, sir.
We need to remove the sanctuary.
Your time is done, sir, thank you.
Well, sorry, very important, my, our children, our children.
Have a good day, sir. Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard? Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard? One last time, for the good of the order, do we have any citizens who would like to be heard? I hear none, we will be moving on.
Ordinance says for final passage, Council File Number 16427, Official Ordinance 152024, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $150,000 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure thereof for the Construction of the Downtown Erie PA Stormwater Green Infrastructure Project, U.S. EPA Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, Grant 00E02812. Sponsored by Council Member Troop, Secured by Council Member Titus. The Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16427, and now known as Official File Ordinance 152024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 152024 by yea seven nay zero. Council File Number 16428, Official Ordinance 162024, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $169,700 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure thereof for the Purchase of Five Code Enforcement Vehicles and Related Equipment through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, CEAP, grant numbers C000088291 and C000088292. Sponsored by Council Member Nelson, Secured by Council Member Schoff. The Council File Number 16428, and now known as Official File Ordinance 162024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 162024 by yea seven nay zero. Council File Number 16429, Official Ordinance 172024, An Ordinance Amending Article 131, Bureau of Fire, to Add Sections That Create a Fire Prevention Division and That Create an Office of Chief Fire Marshal and Fire Marshal to Improve the Safety of Buildings Through Inspections, to Prevent Fires or Fire Hazards Through Inspections, and to Investigate the Origins and Circumstances of Fires. Sponsored by Council Member Schoff, Secured by Council Member Brzezinski. The Council File Ordinance Number 16429, and now known as Official File Ordinance 172024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 172024 by yea seven nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16430, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $17,281 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure thereof in the Capital Fund and will be used to pay for upfitting of new motorcycles. Funds are from the sale of older motorcycles which are being replaced. Sponsored by Council Member Schoff, Secured by Council Member Nelson. The Council File Ordinance Number 16430 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council pass and adopt Council File Ordinance 16430 by yea seven nay zero on first Council File Number 16431, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $198,630 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure thereof in the Risk Fund and will be used to purchase a refuse truck. Funds are from the insurance proceeds from a truck that was damaged in a fire in 2021. Sponsored by Council Member Schoff, Secured by Council Member Troop. The Council File Ordinance 16431 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16431 by yea seven nay zero on first Council File Number 16432, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $1751,173 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to Provide for the Expenditure thereof for the Kauka Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project, Bid Number 1819-24. Sponsored by Council Member Brzezinski, Secured by Council Member Troop. The Council File Ordinance Number 16432 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16432 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Madam President, this takes us to new business.
Motion to move the balance.
Oh, okay. Any separations, anyone?
Madam President, Number Two on Contract, abstain.
Did you get that, Lori?
Yes.
Any other separations?
I hear none, so we can move on.
Moving the balance of the agenda, Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores. Resolution passes, yea seven nay zero. Going to Contracts Number Two. Sponsored by Council Member Brzezinski, Secured by Council Member Troop. The proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue an agreement to the John F. Kennedy Center, 2021, East 20th Street, 16510, for Spoons Basketball League as part of the Summer Recreation Program for the Bureau of Parks at a total cost of $77,497.
Does anyone have any comments on council?
No finer program in the tri-state area.
Right.
Get it passed.
The kids need something to keep them busy in the summer, so it's always a great, you know, program to attend, so please let us know about the schedules, because I know Council Member Troop has mentioned that he would like for us to make an effort to show up at some of the youth games. So basketball and the football league are going to be seeing some council members' faces in the coming months, so that's good.
Thank you.
Voting on the resolution, Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores. Resolution passes, yea seven nay zero. Oh, he abstained?
Yeah, Mel abstained.
See, that's what I was waiting for. I didn't hear it.
It's okay, we got it.
Thank you. Resolution passes, yea six, nay zero, one abstentia. All righty, I think this takes us to committee reports.
Okay, so we're gonna start on the left side of the room and work our way around. Councilmember Mel can start.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd just like to report that last month, I attended a grant writing program in Buffalo, New York, it was a two-day session, one outstanding instructor, we all call her Miss Becky. She's very knowledgeable, she shared many avenues of possible grants. And once our grant writer is in place, I plan to spend time with the administration and help wherever I can and use the contacts that I was able to network with in Buffalo throughout Pennsylvania to help us bring in more money through grants. I have an extra book that I can leave in the clerk's office and administration can grab it and use it and go through it. Any questions, give me a call, I'll be more than happy to work with you and it was well worth it. Thank you.
I'm happy that you felt it was worth the effort, so good. I know you were concerned.
Tyler, you ready?
Thank you. So the next board meeting for the Erie Parking Authority will be on the 9th, so next week, so I'll have more to report at our evening meeting for City Council. Just a reminder about the eclipse, I know we're talking about it a lot, but this is absolutely going to impact the access to parking ramps. So if you are somebody who uses the parking ramp regularly for work or just... So if you are somebody who uses the parking ramp regularly for work or just being downtown, make sure that you're aware of this. The fees on that day will be twenty dollars to park, so that is, it's a big thing, so make sure you're planning accordingly. I did attend the EMTA press conference last, last week alongside Senator Loughlin and a representative from State Representative Bob Mursky's office to highlight the six CNG or Compromised Natural Gas buses and the seven para- para-transit lift vehicles that they're releasing into the fleet. The CNG buses are part of their initiative to reduce their carbon footprint. I think it's a great step in the right direction. There is, as far as the Erie Zoo, we're working on getting a meeting set up with, with some board members from the zoo and with the administration to just kind of go over some more of those projects, so looking forward to doing that. Additionally, it is Autism Awareness Month, so make sure that we're taking time to learn more about this narrow divergence. There are some phenomenal resources out there, and there are some not-so-phenomenal resources out there, so when we're looking to learn more, lean into the accounts or the research that is presented by those with the lived experience. That's your best go-to there. I do want to also state publicly that I am very much in support of the public library, remaining the public library, and will do what I can to help in that asset. I wasn't going to add this to my report out, but I do feel countering misinformation is absolutely critical in this, in this case. And as the, the open, very openly queer person is sitting on city council right now, I think it's important to address, for anybody who is listening, especially our youth who are listening to this, that yes, suicide is a leading cause of death for queer people, especially between the ages of ten to twenty-four. We know that gender expansive youth have suicide attempts at up to fifty percent. That means gender expansive, gender expansive youth, every forty-five seconds, every forty-five seconds, are attempting suicide. That is not a meniscule number, that's millions across the globe and hundreds of thousands in our state, or in, in the U.S. So since we started caucus to this point right now, that means a hundred and twenty queer youth between the ages of thirteen to twenty-four have attempted suicide. That's not a number to take lightly. That reason, the top two contributing reasons to that are familial, familial and social rejection, and that is backed by data and backed by research. The reason I'm getting so passionate about this is not only being a queer person who had to assume suicide attempts prior to graduating high school due to the relentless bullying that I endured from the community and being misunderstood, is I also am raising a queer child, and I do not want them to ever believe that I sat silent and let misinformation be spread about them. So this is, I think, important for us to note that this is what it is like to be a queer person. We try to exist, and we are attacked in every space that we go into. And I just want queer youth to know that you matter, and the only queer agenda that we have is to turn queer youth into queer adults, because we want you to know that there's nothing wrong with you and that we are proud, and I, I don't, I don't want to speak for all of city council, but I am proud that we passed the sanctuary resolution, because this should be a space for all to exist. Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
Madam President, I have no report today.
You don't want to talk about the basket?
Yeah, so we, okay, so we did have our basket giveaway over the weekend, and I'd like to thank council members, council president Flores, and vice president Schoff for coming in volunteering at the event, and also thanks Renee for your support of the event, appreciate it. And it was, it was a success, a lot of kids were happy. Like to thank Romolo's Choclos, I think they were on the news, they donated to a lot of events around, and just all the community members who always support that event. You can't, can't do something like that without community, so, thank you.
Thank you. Council member Nelson?
Nothing real specific to the report. It's, I had, I had two weeks of pretty productive stuff that, that I think will be coming out in future discussions, but today it's, it's not really up for it yet, so, no further report.
You don't want to talk about your events last night? No?
I'm, I'm calling people out today. I'm, I'm trying to preserve as much breathing as possible so that I don't continue to deal with the pain of my ribs.
Next council meeting. Council member Schoff?
Thank you, Madam President. I have attended the Water Authority meeting, and they continue to get the lead out and are doing great things, making sure our water is clean and safe to drink. Yesterday, I attended the trade licensing meeting. I was curious about it as I had never been to it before, and when I was working at the front desk, I got to meet plumbers and electricians and things, so I was curious. They make sure that everyone is certified in their licensing, so I was able to witness how that all went about yesterday. I attended the historic preservation meeting this week, and this document is absolutely wonderful. It's long, but it's great. It's very inclusive and diverse, and that's what I really liked about it. Last summer, I had gone to the Hagan History Museum, and Johnny Johnson did a walk through New Jerusalem that I had attended with many people, and we walked through the streets, and I love historic markers, I think we should have more. It's all about knowing your past, so it becomes a part of the future as well, because, you know, you learn from the past, and so I support all of the work that went into that. That was some years in the making. They really worked hard, and I thank all of the people on the committee who had input in this. I went to the Port Authority meeting because it was just after the Twelfth Street reimagined meeting that they had on Twelfth Street, so I just zipped down there. My husband and I went to gallery night, and I went to Dingus Day, celebrating my Polish, ethnic heritage, because I'm Polish on both sides of the family, ironically. Well, I won't go into that, but anyways, I helped make sandwiches for the neighbors, our neighbor's place, and I thank all of the churches that went over and beyond for the homeless. The Covenant Church right here on Sixth Street was the last place that they had, and so now people who were there are trying to find a place for shelter. I drive by the Twelfth Street, St. Patrick's Haven, and it's always sad to see the long line of people waiting to get in. I have a letter to the editor here, a visit to City Hall, and since I spent a year at the front desk, watching people come in and saying hi to people come in, I wanted to share it. So it's my visit to Erie City Hall, letter to the editor. Recently, I woke up thinking I haven't paid my real estate taxes for my office, and I'd better get them paid. I couldn't find a copy of my tax bill, so I went to Erie City Hall, feeling pretty nervous, hoping I could get this straightened out. As I entered City Hall, I passed through security, which looked quite formidable. I was anxious, hoping I could get my taxes straightened out. I walked up, put my briefcase in the X-ray machine, and looked up to find a security guard giving me a nice, big smile. I handed him my keys, he tells me a joke, I tell him a joke. His partner's security guard smiles and tells a joke. They directed me, they direct me to the tax desk, and I head in there with a bit of a smile. I go into the taxes desk and I explain, I don't have my tax bill, but tell them address of the property. I'm quite nervous again, hoping we can sort this out, and I hear a kind voice from the back of the room saying, I've got it here. A woman with a patient, understanding smile walks up to where I am at the desk and shows me the check for my tax bill. It had already been paid by the woman who helps me with my books. She's kind. She reassures me I am not unusually stupid and tells me everything is fine. I realize everything is going to be okay. When you approach a situation filled with fear and anxiety and you're met by kindness, it's a powerful thing, and of all places, I saw that most vividly on my visit to City Hall, JP Daily Erie. So I had voted for security measures when I was on council, and thank you for being kind to people and keeping us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Brazinski?
How do you follow that? Thanks for going to the Port Authority meeting, it's nice seeing you there. My reports are quick. Again, the Port Authority is moving forward in collaboration with other entities to make sure that we can get something started as far as to clean up with the Coke, the Coke plant area. A definite, definite possibility of becoming a real diamond in our, in our city, but it's going to take a lot of hard work to get it cleaned up, and money too. But they're moving forward, and that's, that's a good sign. One thing I didn't talk about when Mr. Coleman, it's nice enough to stop here on what is almost the busiest day for the Seawolves, having an opening day, all the new, it's like the first day of, of college where everybody moves into the dorms, which today's the first day that the boys come back to play ball. Nice thing about it is nineteen of them were here before, so they know the area already, and they're, they settled in real nice. I didn't mention this little pamphlet, pass out from the Seawolves. If you're coming through City Hall, the ladies at the front desk have a stack of them. Nice thing about it is on one side, it gives you the schedule, but the better thing is on the other side, it shows you all the things that they do for special nights, from fireworks to, if you were watching earlier, you saw me try to grab the ring off of Mr. Coleman's hand, the Eastern League championship ring, something that we've never seen here in the city. But again, it's just one more diamond that we're going to have in our huge trophy, become a championship city too. Very important. You, you don't realize it, but I guess people might know I'm a diehard Tiger fan, being born in Hamtramck, but just little tidbits. Myers, one of our ball players that are back here in Erie, his last time at bat in the last Grayfrith League game, kid hit a three-run homer. Think we're going to have some good people here this year? It's going to be exciting baseball for everybody. And again, if the rains ever stop, my poor little Tigers are taking swimming lessons in New Jersey with the Mets. They had two games in a row rained out, but hope springs eternal, we're still undefeated. And if you can get there, opening night would be great, but don't forget, I think he said June sixth or June ninth?
It is on the little pamphlet as June eighth.
June eighth, I was right around there.
The first fifteen-hundred fans, we'll get a replica.
First, yeah, that'll be a plastic one. I tried to talk to him into a real one, but he wouldn't give it up. I thank you, folks, hope everybody had a good holiday, and keep on clapping until we clap all these clouds out of the way, because if we have clouds for the eclipse, it's going to be a sad thing. Oh, I better mention one thing, because I've been getting quite a few calls on Twelfth and Green Garden. I got buzzed here, we've been playing phone tag, but I'm in touch with the owner. We don't expect him to clean it up and start building tomorrow, but it'd be real nice to have a sign out there saying, home of future construction. That's for all the folks that are going to be coming into the city for that eclipse, I think that would be a real welcoming type of thing, rather than looking like a view of the Ukraine. That's all I have, and I'll be talking to Mr. Casey after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go. I would just like to comment on a few things that I attended. I did help out with council member Troop and his mother's place, Odessa's place, it's on West Eighteenth. They passed out two hundred and fifty baskets to children, and then they had roughly fifty baskets to hand out to parents, which was really sweet. I was there from nine-thirty to three, and every time a parent got a basket, they were just so surprised, but so happily surprised that they were thought of, so that was nice to experience. I know that they will be passing out a dinner this coming Saturday, I'm not quite sure of the hours, do you know the hours, Mel? I think it's around eleven, it might be noon, yeah, so I know that's going on for a few hours this coming Saturday at Odessa's place, I just wanted to mention that since I did hear about it when I was there. I attended the knockout homelessness to watch council member Nelson and then Officer Tom Lennox, and that was a great experience as well, they put on a great show, it was really entertaining, probably will be attending next year. I have a invitation to an IFtar dinner on Friday, held, hosted by the Bosnian Islamic community that I will be attending this Friday, and the Tuesday department head meetings are going well, and as council member Tyler had mentioned, it is Autism Awareness Month. I am somebody who, I work with the community who, you know, the intellectual disabled or the autistic, depending on how they want to label themselves. I'm a direct support professional or habilitation technician, so I get people out in the community to live their day-to-day lives, to be as fulfilled and as happy as everyone else, so I'm really happy that we have that type of service in our community, because everyone deserves to be, you know, in charge of their wants and desires in life, so I help do that in my spare time, it's my regular job outside of council business. And then, this month is early, so there's more meetings coming, there's more events coming, and then opening day for the Seawolves is April ninth, so if you would like to be there for the opening game, that is the date, it'll be a great experience. Hopefully the weather will be warm, because I've been there on cold days and it's not as fun. But happy birthday to our deputy city clerk, Marilyn. She is inside, but she is celebrating her birthday tomorrow, and we wanted to wish her a happy birthday today, because we're all here today, and she is a great asset to our office, so I wanted to give her a moment to feel appreciated, even though she's inside. And that is all I have to report, so I will move on to our treasurer, no, our controller, sorry.
Madam President, is there any truth in the rumor that you're putting your name in for the knockout homelessness?
Oh, no, 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 I'm not doing that. I'm the oldest of thirteen, I already have the experience, a lot of back and forth. No, I think council member Nelson is experiencing enough pain for all of us, just saying. But go ahead, Teresa. Okay, Solicitor's Office?
The Solicitor's Office has no report, thank you.
Okay, and Administration, Renee, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, I'll be quick, just three things. I wanted to make sure everyone knows that the city's HUD annual plan is currently posted on the city's website. It's also available in the clerk's office, and in the office of Department of Economic and Community Development, and at the community centers and the library. Again, this has changed a little bit since the study session, as the staff was able to get some additional information from agencies, but these numbers are still proposed. We don't expect to have our allocation from HUD for CDBG Home and ESG until maybe May, which is going to throw off the schedule a little bit, but that is posted for people to review. Also, coming up, the week of April eighteenth, we're going to be providing some updated information regarding the Infinite Erie Delivery Team that's working on the permanent supportive housing issue, the shortage that we have in Erie, and we'll be reporting on next steps and, and where we are currently with those projects. And then finally, just on the eclipse, you know, it's, we're all looking forward to April ninth, not only for Seawolf's opening day, but also for the eclipse being over. It's been a lot of, a lot of planning work and a lot of preparation, and of course, we don't know what to expect, but if we do get anywhere from fifty thousand to two hundred thousand visitors, we have all plans in place to do the thousand visitors, we have all plans in place to do the best that we can to handle that volume of traffic. If residents, residents do choose to go out, we just want to make sure people are prepared for gridlock of up to possibly twelve hours, which is what city's experienced in 2017, that we're in the path of totality. Peach Street Jam could be really jammed.
Twelfth Street Peninsula?
Twelfth Street, yes. A lot of people planning to go to Presque Isle, planning to come to the Bayfront, people who are visiting and put Erie into, you know, their mapping apps, you know, it goes to downtown, it goes to the Bayfront, Presque Isle, so, you know, just think things through, make sure that if you're, if you're home, if you have people that are coming to your home, make sure you have prescriptions, food, in case you can't get out that day. But enjoy yourselves, I think it's going to be great. Make sure not to look at the sun directly at the time between two and three sixteen, and then from three-twenty to four-thirty, because that's when the rays will be the most harmful. People have gone blind from looking directly at the sun, and we can't emphasize that enough, so we want people to view it safely and enjoy it. It won't happen in Erie again until twenty-one, forty-four, so.
Can I mark that down?
Yeah. I mean, I think it's more so if you're not planning on driving, you're more than likely going to enjoy yourselves.
Yes.
If you have plans in your neighborhood or within walking distance, it's very safe for you to do that.
Yes.
It's just, we know how Erie drivers are a bit aggressive, and sometimes we're antsy, and we don't give ourselves enough time, and if you're not paying attention to what's going on, it could make for a little bit of a hazard to navigate, so.
Yeah.
I definitely want our residents to enjoy themselves, but just factor in that you might want to do it on foot.
Right. There will be a lot of people here from out of town that may not know our streets, we own one-way streets, traffic flow, and for us who are used to being able to get fifteen minutes anywhere, that may not be the case on Monday, so that's it, thanks.
Nice, thank you, thank you. I believe that is everything, so meeting adjourned.
City council adjourns at nine fifty-eight a.m.